Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilor Broderick.
Here.
Councilor Caulfield.
Here.
Councilor Mercia.
Here.
Three present.
Thank you. This is the Neighborhood Traffic Subcommittee. And the reason that we're convening this meeting is Council Dakota filed a motion to ask the city manager to inform neighborhood organizations about proposed zoning changes. And before we open up the meeting for discussion, I would like to recognize my colleague to my left, Council Kevin Broderick, my colleague to my right, Council Rita Mercia, also Mayor James Milonazzo, Council Frankie Dakota, and Henry Marshand from the city manager's office, also representing the various neighborhood organizations from the Acre, David Willett, from the Lower Highlands, Tanya Malane Dixon, from Potteckville, Deb Fergione and John Hamlet, and from Centerville, Lou Richards and Anne Marie Page. Did I forget anyone?
Carol McCarthy.
Oh, Carol McCarthy, I'm sorry. From the South Lowell Sacred Heart Organization. I'm sorry, Carol. And we have two fine citizens sitting behind us, along with Manager Lynch and Adam Bakke. So the meeting will open, and the motion was filed by Council Dakota. And Council, if you'd like to, you could present that motion one more time and let everyone know.
Sure, thank you very much. The motion was made because I had heard on several occasions residents coming in and felt, and they seemed to express that they were not getting information or not sure how they were getting information on different city zoning changes that were made. And I'm really excited about the time that we're in in Lowell because we have a great, well-managed, professional city government and really interested, engaged neighborhood groups. And so I want to make sure that we work together. And so the purpose was to allow you to let us know, particularly Mr. Bakke and Bakke and Mr. Lynch here, the way that works best for you until we can all get on the same page in terms of communication. And then also give you an opportunity to hear how the zoning policies work and what the limitations are with the city departments, and then discuss if, in fact, there can be changes made and how to make that happen. So thank you all for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilor. Now, is there anyone representing the different organizations that'd like to come to the podium, and we can get a feel of what you're looking for and what would you like? Give us your name and address.
Deb Fergione from Potteckville Citizens Council. I guess we're coming here to collaborate with everyone. What happens is when you're in a neighborhood group, and we're all work, we're all part of the community, it's exhausting to keep having to follow what's going on in the city. You can go to the website, you can hear it through city councilors, people come to our meetings, but there's not an organized, structured way that we know when zoning changes are being proposed. If we do get a notice of zoning changes or planning board changes, they're written in an agenda that sometimes we don't understand what it is. So we'll get the agenda, we read what it is, we interpret it, or we have to ask people what it means. And that's if we actually get to it that week within our neighborhood organizations. You know, we're not full-time people that do this as a profession, we're just really representing the neighborhood. And I think, myself and all the other neighborhood groups, our main job is to get the information out to the neighborhood members, period. That's what we do. We try to get everyone informed, and it's going to matter to some people on some issues more than others. So sometimes if an issue comes up, it may be important to me, but it isn't important to, say, my neighbor, and vice versa. So getting the information out to all the members to get feedback is going to help you as well as councilors, that if something comes out and you'll get feedback on what we're thinking, instead of after it happens, you know what we're thinking. So the preemptive strike is probably what we're looking for. And we do get the zoning agendas, we get the planning board agendas, but sometimes we don't understand the clarity of what's going on. And that's what I have to say, so I'm gonna have the other members talk as well. But that's what we wanted to start the dialogue of something more definitive, I guess, on how things would come out of City Hall, or how maybe you want us to get the information. So basically, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to address this issue?
My name is Anne Marie Page. I live at 26 Fremont Street, and I sit on the board of the Centerville Neighborhood Action Group. And in January, I'll be their new president. As Debbie said, we want to hear about something before it happens, not after it happens. You know what I mean? We want to know when you're loading the gun, after you fire it. So what's happening, and as Debbie said, is right, very good. We hear from planning, we hear from zoning, we watch the council, we read the paper. And it's getting better. It's better than it was, believe me. It's better than it was. We just want to make sure that if somebody in a department head, and today I got an excellent email from our new director in inspectional services, but we want to hear about it before it happens, not after it happens, right? We want to lock the door before the horse gets off the bond. We don't want to find out he left, and now we're going to lock the door. It's a lot harder. So what Debbie said is right. Communication, is it better? Yes, it is. Is it getting better? Yes, it is. Do we want it to continue? Yes, we do. So if you hear something, or a department head knows, this is going to happen in Centerville, this might happen in Centerville, they're looking at this, it's a good idea to send, if somebody notifies Mike Damaris and just says to Mike, "Send it out to the neighborhood," he'll send it out to the neighborhood heads, and we'll email each other. If we have a comment or we have a problem, we'll contact each other and say, "Well, this is how this is going to work, that's not such a good idea. This is how it works here, maybe it doesn't work there." It's all a matter of communication. It is better than it was, it really is, and it is getting better. But we just want, and thank you very much for making the motion, because that's what we want. We want to make sure the doors of communication are open to us. We live in these neighborhoods, so we want to make sure we hear about it before it happens. Thank you very much for your time. Have a very happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to?
Taya Dixon-Malane, President of Lower Highlands Neighborhood Group. And just to give you some anecdotal experience, the recent zoning change that was proposed, you know, we found out about it. I did get the ZBA notice of the zoning change, that it had been discussed, I think it might have been actually at the planning board, but we got the notice, didn't understand what it really meant, because I didn't, you know, I don't read the zoning code every day. But, you know, I found out more about it when Centerville and Potteckville were more heavily invested in it. And, you know, that gave me about a week and a half to try to solicit feedback from our neighborhood group, from members, and it just wasn't sufficient time. So just to give you, just a perspective on, you know, the timing issue, that was a hurdle for us. And, you know, I did get some comments back, but nowhere near what I think would have been helpful for you all to make a decision. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to, Carol, or John, or Carol, or David?
John Habler from Potteckville. The two issues, one has been touched on is timing. Sometimes we can't get the information any earlier, a planning board agenda or a zoning board agenda. But if there is something that we would like to look into, and we need more time, I'd like to learn if we can ask for that time. May we ask the zoning board for a continuance? May we ask the planning board for a continuance? If we need more information. Sometimes if it's a major issue, we are far more comfortable going back to our neighborhood and asking them, "What is your opinion on this?" Currently, we just don't have the time to do that. So if that's one issue that could be addressed. The other is your motion addressed specifically zoning, and I would like to make sure that the planning board is included in that, and the Conservation Commission. We're finding more and more cases coming up that we might like to speak on at the Conservation Commission. So how can we get the information about what's coming up in front of their meeting in English, so that we can understand it? Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Good evening. My name is Carol McCarthy. I chair the Sacred Heart Neighborhood Improvement Group, along with the Riverside Neighborhood Council. And I think the most important thing is timing. I mean, we are all volunteers, we have full-time jobs, and generally what we do this is, and I think, Mr. Lynch, you can, how many times have I emailed you, like at 1:00, 2:00 in the morning? And it's just, you know, and the more information we have, the better it'd be. I mean, sometimes the neighborhood groups can be helpful to the companies that are coming in. Like when Targets wanted to come in, they approached our group right away, and we were on board with them from day one. So I think the process, we can over, you know, the anxiety that people have as to what's coming in, we can kind of diffuse that a little bit, so that if we have the timing in there and a little bit more information, I know we do receive things from the zoning board, and we receive things from planning, developing, but it's just little bleeps. And when you read it, sometimes it's like, oh, my gosh, maybe we better get down there, and how far into the process have they already been? And then we're delaying them, and we're stopping them. So sometimes if we're on board from the beginning, and we have the information we need, we can be a real help to them as to moving it along. And sometimes it's better for both worlds, it's better for us, and it's better for the company that wants to be there, or even the homeowner that wants to add an addition on sometimes. We can be there. So the more information we have on the timing is the better. So thank you.
Hi, David Willett. David Willett from Action, the Acre Group, pretty much being last, everybody's already said everything. I've lost my voice at the Patriots game the other day, so I'm really kind of hoarse right now.
So did we.
Yes, yes. So I'd just like to really say thank you, because timing is everything, because we've ran into a couple of issues in the Acre already, and being behind it made it a lot harder, because you had all the residents coming in screaming, hollering, making the thing into, like you said, to calm them all down for us, then we can get into the issues. So I'd just like to thank you for the motion, and all of this is just going to help all of the community groups. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. My colleague, Council Broderick, would offer something?
I think it's a good motion, and I appreciate people coming out to speak on this. And I think we understand, hopefully we come up with what we're going to hear. I don't know if we're going to get a plan tonight, or if this is to gather information and come back. But I think that I agree with several of the speakers that the communication has improved, but like anything, we can always make improvement on it. And I think part of it is having a clear-cut path or a way, a means of doing this is what can help clarify things, and is stated. Sometimes notice is going to be short because, you know, with the agendas, when they're available. But there are other times when we know something's coming, maybe in DPD, that give folks a heads up and let them know that something's in the works, and maybe get some feedback. And as was stated again, that, you know, neighborhoods can be a great proponent for a project as well, and get in early, and maybe even save some of these, you know, these businesses, develop some money with their ideas and way things might work better in their own neighborhood. Appreciate you coming out. You folks are the ones that, you know, give us most of our ideas and some of the common sense approach to some things in the neighborhoods, because you live there, and it's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I also want to thank each and every one of you for coming out. We want to feel that the city and the neighborhood is a great partnership with each other. And that's my number-one concern, no matter if it's your issue or any issue that comes before the city council. I may not agree with someone, but I think they have a right to know all about what we're going to be discussing. For example, you did mention that you probably could get a notice about a zoning rule or whatever, and it seems like a foreign language to you. That's no different than the city council getting an agenda, you're looking at our agenda. But we know all what's going on, because we get paperwork that goes along with the motions, and that's just what you're asking for, that looking at it on the surface, you probably don't see the breakdown the way that we see it, or the way that Adam Bakke sees the breakdown in the zoning. As far as your question about if anyone attended a planning board or a zoning board, could the public request a continuance because they want further discussion on it? Because I don't know the rules about that. Adam, would you be able to as a resident?
In many cases, and probably most cases, yes. There are, well, the neighborhood groups and the residents and any interested party can always request a continuance of any item. And in most cases, that can be granted. There are certain types of things where the state statutes actually prescribe fixed time limits for the deliberation on whatever the topic may be. Zoning amendments are a good example of that. There is a very fixed time limit within Chapter 40A about during which time the planning board has to act in terms of providing their recommendation. And then there is a fixed time limit during which the council has to hold a public hearing. And then there is another fixed time limit during which the council has to act on the zoning amendment. And those are set. Similarly, there are similar rules that are set for time limits for acting on subdivisions. We have actually built into our own zoning time limits for when the boards have to act on site plan review, and the Conservation Commission has time limits for when they have to act. However, we try constantly, we try to improve our process at the front end, so that we are holding the hearings as early within that time limit as we possibly can, just for that reason, so that if there's testimony or information that comes out at the hearings, we still have some time for the board, or the council, or whoever the deliberative body is, to use that, incorporate that testimony that they got from the public hearings into asking the applicants to make changes, or continue it, and so forth. And that's actually, I think, an important part of the process. The one flip side about that is that time is very critical for economic development projects in particular. And there will often be sort of a competing set of priorities between the desire to have as many people as possible, have as much information as possible, versus having a project that's generally perceived to be a positive economic development project for the city be able to move forward. And there will be occasionally situations where a delay in the project may mean the project doesn't come to Lowell, or chooses a different community. And we have to constantly be balancing, you know, whether we're trying to recruit projects, or whether we're trying to...
Yes, that's very important. But I don't think anybody sitting in this room doesn't want a business or whatever to come here.
I agree.
But having said that, this is a wonderful motion. This is the means of being informative to the neighborhood groups. Now, where do we go from here? Because there's the rest of the puzzle. I think, as some speaker said, I don't know if it was Anne Marie Page, but who's going to handle this? The Division of Neighborhood Services and Mike Damaris, we just might add another job description to this gentleman, because he attends all the neighborhood group meetings, as many as he can. I think he's probably the point person that could be in charge to be the person, the go-between person between the neighborhoods. And maybe he knows every one of your email addresses, and he can send it out, or a phone number, and make a phone call, because that's his job. It's a job that he has given. Division of Neighborhood Services, it's just another service that I think he's providing. So having said that, I hope he's not mad at me, and I'm not trying to add to his job description, but this is a good thing. You know better what's best for your neighborhood than I do. Maybe you have an idea about your neighborhood and this zoning law that's going in, that you'd like to know more about it. Maybe it's, maybe you'd like to add something. Well, maybe we didn't think of that, and you thought of it. So discussion, dialogue, information, all these things, whether it's this issue or any other issue, this is transparency in government, this is what you asked us for, this is what you held our feet to the fire for, and I support it 100%.
Thank you, Council Mercia. I also want to recognize Council McDonaldson and Council Murphy, who's also in attendance. And before I ask the manager to weigh in on this issue, I attended a Potteckville meeting, God rest its soul, Anne Welcome was the person that is at that meeting, along with many other people, 25 years ago. 25 years ago, the residents of Potteckville were concerned about the Merrimack River, the forest, many, many things that probably never would have been addressed if we didn't have that neighborhood organization in Potteckville. And the Centerville organization, I remember 23 years ago, we had crime on Bridge Street, and there were things that were going on that you just couldn't visualize, and they fought for a police precinct there. And then David Willett's working hard in the Acre, and that neighborhood has rebounded. It's one of the nicest neighborhoods you could have in any city. And Tanya Malane Dixon is working hard in the Lower Highlands. God bless you and those people who are on that organization with you. You're doing wonderful things. And Carol McCarthy, how many times you would come to the podium and say, "You've got to do something about the railroad tank that's on the tracks with full ammonia and so forth." So the organizations, the council, respect you and wants you to continue your good, hard work. Sometimes we don't agree all the time, but that's government, that's democracy, that's the debate that's before us. But you're doing great work, and I'll ask the manager to see how we can improve communicating, not only on the zoning changes, but if there's construction going on in the neighborhood, or repaving, or things of that nature, I think you should be informed, so you can call your constituents. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I couldn't agree more. Communication with the neighborhood groups is, and working in partnership with the neighborhood groups is something that I think that we've been doing, working quite hard at. And I think, I appreciate Anne Marie Page's comments that things have, and a number of the other speakers, that things have gotten better. I think we've made important strides over the last several years to utilize technology, and as well as allocate staff to spend more time out in the neighborhoods, even my own presence, and going out to the neighborhood groups on a one, two, three times a year basis to explain what's going on in the city is all part of that ongoing dialogue that we have with the neighborhood organizations. That being said, I think that there's always room for more improvement. If the neighborhood organizations feel that just getting the agendas from the planning board and zoning board isn't enough, that they'd like somehow to enhance that in some way, so that they can do their jobs more effectively, which in turn helps us do our job more effectively, I think we need to have that type of discussion and then look for making improvements. Certainly, we've already, someone's already contacted us, Deb, I think, from the Potteckville Citizens Council regarding the Conservation Commission. Having, we weren't aware, I wasn't aware that that wasn't part of the flow of information as well, so we're already making strides there. And I think that, as Adam and I were talking about a little bit earlier, the fact that what should go a long way in helping us with our communication, and I'm going to let Adam speak to more specifics on this, but certainly one of the areas that's going to help us with the keeping in touch with neighborhood organizations, letting them know what's going on, is this reorganization that we've done with Development Services, so that there's better internal consideration or coordination of effort with regard to construction projects and zoning issues that come up, because all of those people are in the same office now and having the same discussion, so that the left hand knows what the right hand is doing. And that should enhance our ability to pass that information on. So I think that we certainly are anxious to work with the neighborhood organizations to kick it up a notch beyond what we've already done. And I think that that will only help all of us as we go forward. There are some issues that, you know, that we may not be able to do entirely regarding explanations. Certainly, we can try to put things in more, put them more in English, but we have to be careful that we walk that fine line, that we're not tilting one way or the other from the perspective of adequate hearing before the regulatory bodies. But I'm going to turn it over to Adam, and I know that he's had some ideas regarding this, and can speak to this issue as well.
Thank you, everyone. I think, first of all, there is no question in my mind that the presence of strong, well-organized neighborhood organizations makes the communication of information about projects, potential zoning amendments, plant, planning projects, anything else, construction, development, much easier. And in fact, it's very much in our interest to have well-organized neighborhood organizations that can help get the message out. So we actually do try very hard to make sure we're communicating to them, and there's obviously always opportunities to do it better. If we didn't have the well-organized neighborhood organizations that we do enjoy in this city, it would be extremely hard for us to get information out to a lot of the residents of the city. So I really want to extend a significant thanks to all of the people who are here tonight, as well as some of the neighborhood leaders who aren't here tonight, for all of the countless volunteer hours they put in, frankly, making our job of communication easier. And we really do genuinely appreciate that. So certainly, anything that we can do to help make our communication to those leaders who are so helpful to us easier and better is something we want to do. And over the past few years, as the manager alluded to, we have found ways to employ technology to make that communication process much more efficient than it used to be. Even, you know, within the last decade, I remember having to, you know, mail documents out to all the neighborhood leaders, which added time, and also meant, it added a cost to the city of postage and so forth. Now, we do everything by email, and we're able to maintain an email database, which can extend beyond to any citizen who's interested in being notified. It doesn't even have to be someone who's the official leader of a neighborhood organization. So anyone who is interested in receiving copies of agendas for the various boards, or notices of hearings and so forth, we're happy to add them to our email distribution list. And there are other vehicles, including the city's website, the city manager's blog, and other tools that we can use to disseminate the information to people who haven't necessarily provided us with their email address. I do appreciate, I think, two kind of, I think there were sort of three themes that I heard today that we will take a look at. One is the, just the complexity of some of these issues, and the complexity of the process. There were a couple of allusions to zoning, for example, being a very complicated thing. And there's no question that it is, and it's a very hard thing to understand. And it's a very hard thing, in some ways, to predict all of the potential implications of something. Fortunately, that's a process that actually is designed to have multiple avenues, in fact, that required to have multiple avenues for public input before multiple entities, the planning board and the city council, before the city council can take any definitive action, which I think the recent case with the issue of the drive-throughs is actually an excellent illustration of the communication process, and more importantly, the neighborhood input being very valuable, coming at a timely moment that allowed for some further clarification, and then ultimately some changes, so that the product was a better one for that process. And I know there was some concern that, you know, the timing may not have been what people would have liked. But in fact, the timing ultimately was successful in that case. I think we can always improve it. You know, timing is certainly the next issue, and anything we can do to continue to accelerate the timeline of getting information out, we will certainly try to do. As the manager mentioned, we have now combined, under the new reorganization and the creation of Development Services, we have now combined the administration of all of the land use boards that deal with these projects, as well as the rules that govern a lot of these projects, before the rules are ultimately approved or not by the city council. And by having the same staff doing that, and being able to look at the processes of all of the boards, and I've actually instructed them to look at the processes of all the boards, and see what works best about each, and then try to apply that to all the others. Because there are things that in the past, our process with the planning board has been the best at communication. There are things that I think the zoning board administration process has actually been the best at communicating to people. And there are things that the Conservation Commission does well, and there are things that the Historic Board does well. What we want to do is take the best of each of them and apply that to all of the others, to improve that process, to get the word out as broadly as we can, as efficiently as we can, and to as many people as we can. And then the last thing I think I heard a lot about is just whether the, while the messages may be getting out in the form of agendas or notices, sometimes the wording of them is not something that's easy for the layperson to readily understand and absorb what is actually being proposed or being discussed. And I think there's a couple of things we can do about that. I will certainly instruct the staff that writes those to do their best to take off their sort of technical hat and put on a hat of just, you know, a regular citizen, and reread whatever they've written to try to make sure that they would be able to understand it as best they can, even if they weren't a technical expert. And to the best of our ability, we'll try to make the language more accessible in those. We'll also try to make them more descriptive. One of the other advantages of not having to send things out with postage, but in fact, being able to send them out by email means there's really no limit on the amount of words we can write, or information we can put on the page. So we will try to be a little more descriptive. And then another thing I did observe that our board administrative staff actually already has started to do, I'm on their mailing list, along with the neighborhood leaders, so I can see what they're getting. And I did, I received an email, I think it was either today or yesterday, that actually included additional information about a couple of the projects. It wasn't just the agenda. And to the extent that we have information in a format that's relatively easy to send out, there's really no, there's no challenge or difficulty in doing so. So we certainly will try, we'll try to do that. And again, I would strongly encourage anyone who's interested in that information, whether they're a neighborhood leader or not, if they can contact us and provide us with their email address, we're happy to add them to the, add them to the list. email address, we're happy to add them to the, add them to the list. Our main phone number is 978-446-7200, and from that number, you can reach anybody in the Department of Planning and Development, in the, or in both divisions, and we can take that information. Or if you just know what you're calling about, we can route the call to the correct person from that number. So...
Mr. Manager?
Just an add-on to what Adam was mentioning, that in terms of what we're doing, you know, again, in constantly enhancing how we get information out, with the sending out materials beyond just the agenda. Rick reminded me of the software that we're working with, with the Clerk's Office, that we're rolling out, that will soon make all of the background information available for every agenda to the public, so that when the public, you know, we've made a, we've certainly been sending out the agenda and the backup material to anyone who asks for it, but we have to get them on the list. That will soon be available automatically. The motion that was made three or four years ago by Council Broderick, to have responses to council motions all put online, so that people can get it, again, is an example of getting that information out. But the new software that we're getting, that we're very excited about, for a variety of reasons, we'll provide that. And again, it's all part of that effort to continue that openness that we're looking to achieve. And I, again, I want to concur with Adam's comments regarding the importance of the neighborhood organizations. They really are the means by which we are able to, you know, sort of shrink the city in our ability to deal with problems that are out there, being experienced by the residents.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Mr. Manager. And if I may suggest, Council Rita Mshe indicated that Mike Damaris attends a lot of neighborhood meetings, and he could inform the organization, but I would even go further than that, if Mike Damaris does that, also follow up with an email to contact people, that the president or the secretary of that organization, to make sure they're informed, and they're aware of an issue coming forward? And I think that's, this is a double dose of protection for the city and for the organizations as well. And is there any questions from, yes, Council?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Mr. Manager, you just mentioned about putting the council packet basically online, or through by email. I assume we could do the same, would there be any provision of doing that with the zoning board, planning board, Conservation Commission, and the other boards? I think that may go, be a big step in terms of what some of the neighborhood groups are asking for, is the information in the explanations. A lot of times, you know, we get our packet, has a nice, you know, informational packet from DPD that explains what's really going on, because, you know, some of the stuff is complicated, and it's the same with the ZBA and the planning board as well.
The vast majority of the information in those packets is fairly easy to put, to make available online, and we will work to find a way to do that. The only thing that is a little more challenging, certainly not impossible, but just a little more time-consuming, is the larger format plans. We do have technology that allows us to scan those, and have them available in a PDF format that people can read and distribute, but it's time-consuming to scan the many sheets of the larger plans. That may be one thing that we won't be able to do right away, but there certainly is a fair amount of information that goes in those board packets that can be made available fairly readily.
And that, I think, is, would be at least a good first step, because most folks aren't going to necessarily be able to print those out, and if, you know, if you're looking at a huge plan, and you've got to scan it and shrink it down to an eight-and-a-half by 11 for someone to print at home, it may not be worth it anyway, but at least there'll be access to the explanations, and some of the verbiage, and what's the intent of what's coming up. And thank you. I appreciate the feedback, and people that came out.
Council Dakota, do you have anything to offer, your answer? Council Ms. Shae?
No, but you will present a report, or we're not making a motion on anything here.
No, present a report is a report of progress, I don't think that...
Because I think it's just important, this is quite a remarkable motion, and it is to inform people, and when you do get a, sometimes we make motions to the city clerk, and it's like a paragraph, and he can condense it into a sentence. So if you're looking at a book this thick, maybe a synopsis, so that they can understand it in perfect English, makes sense to me. Thank you.
I also would like to thank the city clerk for notifying all the different neighborhood organizations. I believe that there's at least 11 organizations in the city, and over half of them are here this evening. So I want to thank you for being here, and the Lynch administration, along with the council, will do everything we can to inform you, and do that in a better way. Thank you very much. With that said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved?
Second.
Second.